Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Craven County Meeting for Commissioners, Regular Session, Monday, November 16th, is now in session. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
Here. Let me stand for the pledge and the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good and gracious God, we invoke the brilliant light of your son and cast out all spirits of darkness, discord, and division. May we be united in bonds of love and mutual respect across the aisle and across this nation. May your holy angels of peace dwell in this place, and may your angels guide and protect our brother and friend, Commissioner Johnny Sampson, on his journey to join you in your house. We make this prayer in your holy name. Amen.
You'll notice the approval of the agenda is missing, so we'll make that number one and the consent agenda number 1A. Do I have approval of the agenda?
Some of us.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes? The ayes have it. Next is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of November 2nd, 2020, regular session, tax releases, sheriff, K-9 budget amendment, recreation and parks, international paper foundation grant. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion and second?
Second.
All in favor, no, a roll call.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Next on the agenda is Development Matters Economic Development. Jeff Wood.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Couple of items to bring forward today, all around Lot 19 of the industrial park. The first would be the creation of covenants for Lot 19 for the industrial park, for Craven County Industrial Park. As you know, that's our primary flagship for development. We own now less than 150 acres of that property, and we've had some activity. It's increased especially recently. Most of the park has been governed by the governing board for the industrial park, however, that's only in the northern part of the park. And so as we look at an exit strategy, as the county continues to have less and less property, we want to ensure that we maximize the value of that property. In addition, minimize our liability as we exit the property. And so myself, along with Ariel and legal counsel, have added back and forth a number of ideas of how we would do that. Legal suggested, recommended creating a covenant for Lot 19, where we would be the only owner. It would be easy to build at this point in time. Then as we sell off the property, of course, anybody who would buy it would understand that they're going to be a part of that group. Also, property owners who are in the southern part of the park have an option to join. So for example, the sons that are at the park, typically either the Economic Development Office or the Craven 100 Alliance have been looked at as towards tenants to look at fixing things like that or cutting the grass. This group will help cover those issues. So legal has drafted a set of covenants for the landowner, county's approval, and so I'm asking for actions for approval of those covenants.
Okay, as the sole owner of the Lot 19, the economic development department, and it's legal, is asking for the Board of Commissioners to approve these covenants. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes? The ayes have it.
Thank you. The second is to request a public hearing for December 7th. We intend to convey, for economic development purposes, a fee in simple for six acres to Bayfront Development for $20,000 an acre, which is the market value, a total of $120,000. County intends to sell the same at such value. The county believes the proposed conveyance will stimulate and stabilize the local economy, result in the creation of substantial number of permanent jobs in the county, and result in tax revenues for the county. Purchaser Bayfront Development intends to invest in a shell building based off of the positive development that has transpired in the industrial park, including the development, construction, and sale of the C-1A building in 2019. Bayfront has also made a decision based off of its analysis of the county's investment into Lot 19 to include the recent project to extend water and sewer into the lot. We're requesting that the Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on these matters 7:30 PM on Monday, December 7th, 2020, in the Commissioners' room in the Craven County Administration Building, and interested parties are invited to attend and present their views.
May I interject that it should be 7 o'clock or soon thereafter?
7 o'clock and soon thereafter. Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a public hearing request for this project?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Any no discussion? Kind of a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Craig Warren on Department Matters Finance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item on the agenda this morning for you, and that's for Hurricane Isaías. As a result of damages sustained by Hurricane Isaías, Craven, along with several other counties, were included in a major disaster declaration issued by the President on October 14th, 2020. This declaration authorizes the use of federal funds to assist communities in their response and recovery efforts. As a part of the state's disaster assistance grant application, the governing body must adopt the attached resolution designating the county's primary and secondary agents. It is recommended that the Board authorize the Finance Director and County Manager as agents for this grant application. Although the impacts from the storm were minimal, the county did, however, incur some unexpected cost of approximately $50,000 for the preparation, response, and recovery efforts. These costs included the activation and staffing of the EOC, or Emergency Operations Center, including three shelters, increased activity at the convenience sites for storm debris cleanup, and repairs made to multiple county facilities following the storm. In order to cover these unanticipated costs associated with Hurricane Isaías, a budget amendment appropriated $50,000 from fund balances requested. So I have two actions here for the Board. The first one is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Finance Director and County Manager as agents, and then the following second action would be to adopt Hurricane Isaías budget amendment.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Any no discussion? Kind of a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is the appointments. We have Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, this pending, community.
Mr. Chairman, where are you going with that? Did we approve both or just the resolution?
We approved both.
And did we approve both or just the resolution?
Well, I thought he asked for two actions, so...
He did, but I heard the motion was to approve the resolution and not the funding. I'm just asking.
Let me just look at it for a minute.
You were right, Don.
I thought it should have been two votes.
To be sure, why don't you just go ahead and do a second motion for the budget amendment?
Okay.
Make a motion for the second, approve the $50,000 for fund balance.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Any no discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Look back to the appointments. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, this pending, Community Child Protection Team, Craving Aging Planning Board, Craven Pemico Regional Library, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and the Regional Aging Advisory Board, Senior Legislative Tarheel Alternate, and Volunteer Agricultural District Board. I think we have to start cleaning some of these up because there's quite a few here. Current Craven County Health Board, Jim Davis and Janelle Butts, I believe they both said they would...
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, how many years do we know how long they've served? Are they still eligible?
They are still eligible. I'd have to check the dates though on that.
Commissioner Jones, I spoke with Scott Harrelson. Both of these individuals are finishing their first term.
Okay.
And for a health department appointee, you're allowed two terms, so this would be their second and final term.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Mr. Davis and Ms. Butts be reappointed.
Okay. Craven County Planning Board.
I'm making a motion to reappoint them.
Okay, we have a motion. Yeah. Craven Pemico Regional Library Board.
Make a motion to do the Bird seat reappointment.
If you wouldn't mind, if we could table that until the next meeting, with the reorganization of the library system, going from three counties to two counties, I think we need to take a look at what that board consists of. We don't have representation throughout the whole county, if that's our right of you.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
We can table it.
We'll hold that and table it. Upcoming terms is Cove City Craving Library Board, Craven County Health Board, and the Fireman's Relief Fund Trustees. County Attorney's Report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
County Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioners. Steve, are we going to be able to show the video? Okay, I have just a short video, then I'm going to make some comments after that. Steve, if you would.
Commissioner Johnny Sampson Jr. was born May 31st, 1933, in Craven County to the late Johnny Sampson Sr. and Isabella Nun Sampson. He is survived by his wife, the Reverend Ethel Bell Starkey Sampson, and ten children. He retired from NADEP at MCAAS Cherry Point in 1991 as power support mechanic and training Commissioner Sampson has been a member of the Craven County Board of Commissioners since December 1996. He served as chairman of the board from December 2nd, 2002, through December 1st, 2003, and December 4th, 2006, through December 3rd, 2007. Commissioner Sampson also served on the Craven County Tourism Authority, Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, NAACP, North Carolina Association of Black County Officials, and many other government and civic organizations. Commissioner Sampson had the greatest love for New Bern and Craven County. He had a heartbeat of service, a mind for solutions, and a spirit of thoughtfulness, especially for those who needed him the most. Ann Schout, co-founder of Duffy Field Phoenix, said that he was a Renaissance man, serving his community in many areas. He was a leader in his church, a community activist, a civil rights leader, and civic leader. He will be remembered for his strong advocacy for children and education, the elderly, and the value of local government to its citizens. You have made a difference for many. You will certainly be missed, but never forgotten.
You know, it's hard to watch that and not get some emotion in you. But we're here to celebrate the service of Johnny, Commissioner Sampson. Sir, on this board, since 1996, and he's done a lot of things. I mean, every plaque I saw, I see his name. And he was proud of all those things that he did, that many years of his service. You know, we attended, some of us, the wake and the funeral. You heard what people said about him, not just from the county government side, but from a life perspective, from people at his church. Johnny lived a life of kindness, of concern for others, and the ability to interject himself on behalf of people who couldn't interject themselves. He was an advocate for all people. I mean, there's no question with Johnny when he considered it an issue that he had everybody's best interest in mind. So I'll end it there. We have a memorial today. It's our first Commissioner meeting without Commissioner Sampson here. There's a large void for all of us, particularly the ones that got to know him over the years. So I keep his family in my prayers. I hope you'll do the same, and I know you'll have some comments during your Commissioner Marks. I want to thank the HR Department, particularly Jasmine Kennedy, for putting that together. I think they did a fantastic job, and it's on our Facebook page, it's on our website, and our Twitter account, if you'd like to view it or share it. You know, I'll just kind of end it there, that rest in peace, Commissioner Sampson, great man. Okay.
Colonel, may I ask you?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible that the Board can present a plaque and a resolution for Johnny Sampson's family?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's a great idea. Sure, like an outgoing Commissioner plaque?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We'd be happy to do that. Would you like to do it on December 7th?
Whenever their Board decides to, Don, if that'll be...
Everybody okay? December 7th, resolution and plaque? Okay. Take care of that. Well, I guess getting back to the County Manager's Report. Today, we have a work session. We're going to cover a variety of items. Obviously, we are rapidly finishing the meeting here, and we don't really have anything to do until 10:00. I could cover two items in the Manager's Report here that will just save us time at the end of the work session, if that's okay with the Board. The first one, Commissioner Booker, if you don't mind, do you want to share with them on the DOT issue in your district here?
I met with the, two of the officials from the Department of Transportation last week, and you're all familiar with the intersection where Cherry Point, Old Cherry Point Road comes into Highway 70. It's best described as a V or a Y intersection. Cars coming from Cherry Point Road onto 70, going east, have to really turn their head and their body to look back to see what's coming from the west. And it's been the site of many, many accidents. They gave me a sheet, I didn't bring it with me, but I can share it with you if you want to see it, but there have been a number of accidents in the last five years, probably 30 or 40, with several fatalities. Their goal, their wish, is to block that intersection, so when you come from Cherry Point Road, coming from New Bern onto 70, you can't go east. You would not be able to cross over. That's where most of the accidents happen. People crossing over and getting hit by cars coming from the east. So they'd like to block that, so the only way you could get onto 70 would be to go west. We discussed it at length, for about an hour. We stood out there and watched, and watching cars come on and turning east, it's a scary thing to see. They believe that the best solution, and keep in mind, this is a temporary solution, because within the next few years, that intersection is going to be gone. People are going to have to get onto 70, going up on, or going either back to the west or farther to the east to get onto 70. I'm drawing a blank on the name of the road that comes out of the back end of Carolina Colors.
Camp Cairo.
Camp Cairo. If you look at the new drawings of what the new road's going to look like, there will be an entrance onto 70 at Camp Cairo and off, one of the upramps and offramps. I assume it's up and down, just like they're planning back to the west. So this is going to be a somewhat temporary solution. I sat, from 6:30 to 7:30, I parked before, the day before we met, and there were 60 vehicles that made that turn to the left in that one hour. And I missed much of the Cherry Point traffic that probably was between 6:00 and 6:30. So 60 cars in that one hour, that one day. So literally thousands of cars are making that left. They want them to turn right and go about a half a mile and then do a U-turn. Or they can continue on the access road to the next crossover, which they admit might not be much better, but at least it's a traditional road. It's not the angle. Their wish would be that we would recommend that we would close that one also, that we would close both. But they kind of left, they said, "It's really up to you. If you want to close this one first, we'll see how it works, and then move on from there. If we need to, we can close the next one." The other piece that would be helpful would be to make what they call a bubble, so when you go back to the west, there'd be a U-turn, where there'd be a place to go out on to the side to wait until you can go forward. So they said the ideal would be to close both intersections and put two bubbles out there. That would require quite a bit of funding. But just to close this one, this one spot, would be a relatively inexpensive thing that they can do out of their current budget. So I guess I'm curious, I did one other thing at the Manager's suggestion, I spoke with Steve Tyson, because a few years ago, we closed the road back Garner Road.
Yeah.
And Steve was really looking for a lot of heat when that happened, because we've got a gym, and we've got Garrus Evans Lumber Company. People coming and going to those two facilities, they could no longer come out and go to the east. He said he got one call, and that was it. And he expected he was going to get blitzed when that happened. They got one phone call. So I guess, after looking at it and kind of going through the whole thing, what the state has said now is, they don't want to make a move without us directing them. They don't want the phone calls. They don't want the heat. So they said, "Hey, we'll wait for you. You tell us what you want us to do. You give us a resolution if you want." He said, "Or you can do nothing. If you choose to do nothing, we're not going to push it." But they said, "But our records are showing that this is a major problem intersection." So comments, questions?
I've got one. Down there about on Old Cherry Point Road, I wonder why about three, four weeks ago, where people complained about the water, but now about the beach? You talking about the road?
Laners Beach?
Yeah, where the guy was taking the road over.
No, 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 you're talking about Gibbs Road.
Right. Well, a lot of people, they brought my attention that same thing you're talking about, they can't come down the road, they can't get out. Matter of fact, I go sometime, and I can't get out. And I thought about that, you bringing it up, and it's a dangerous intersection there, and it should be moved down further and come out.
So a couple of things. I'm going to get the intersection pulled up here. It's a non-traditional intersection with DOT. I reviewed it this weekend, Commissioner Booker. I live near this intersection. And one thing is, it's not a road. It is actually just a way to get on Highway 70 off of Old Cherry Point Road. It's not, there's nothing else on it other than this little cut through. The second thing Commissioner Booker talked about a little bit was, this is technically out of the safety funding from the state. So you have your traditional road money, which improves and builds and maintains, and then you have safety money, which targets intersections that have a higher rate of severity with the accidents. And when we looked at the data, it was far exceeding anything I'd seen in Craven County. I mean, it came close to Nelson Road. I mean, maybe a little worse than Nelson and River Road, that intersection there. Again, you've got a couple factors here that play into the thing. You've got the speed of the traffic on 70, you know, 65, 70 miles an hour, and then you've got somebody coming out at 10, and they can't judge the amount of time it takes to get across.
Well, wait, you can't.
And how fast the traffic's going. Just, not that it has any bearing on the conversation, but I have seen several bad accidents at this intersection. I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to pull it up, but to give you a reference point, there's the Riverside RV dealer.
There it is.
And the road is just before it.
You got it.
I got it. Okay. So this is the Riverside RV area. This is Old Cherry Point Road. This is the new animal hospitals, just to the north. This is that little road that comes out. So this is Linair Kinnels, if you're familiar with this. This would be coming from the Toyota dealership up the service road. So you've got a, what Commissioner Booker's talking about is, if you're coming up or down, and you want to go to Havelock, they're going to cut that off with that little barricade in the middle. You're going to go westbound, about half a mile, do a U-turn at the next. I'm trying to think what, that's not a road, it's just a U-turn to get back. The bubble would be on the, actually, the eastbound lane where you would come out. If you just go up just a little bit further, right there. This is the spot where you would do it, right here. There's actually a D cell lane and a U-turn lane there to come back east. And if you went further on Old Cherry Point Road, you would come to the Carolina Colors.
To the light.
And you'd be able to turn left there. I'm sorry, Ariel, I'm going to be blocking your road there.
Mr. Chairman, Denny, did they tell you, like, if they go up, are they going to make that turn lane there? Are they going to extend it out, or they just going to leave it as is?
Well, they said that the simple fix is just to block the eastbound traffic. They do the same thing they did at Gardner Road. They paved a little curb, and then they put the plastic things in.
Right, I've seen it.
So you can't, you can still take a left. You can still, if you're coming from New Bern, you'll still be able to go left onto Old Cherry Point Road. You'll still be able to go from 70 onto Cherry Point Road coming from the east. The only action that will be changed is, you will not be able to go east on 70. And the other thing that I didn't mention was, one of the questions I gave them, I said, 60 cars in an hour this morning, what's it going to look like when you shut down 70 and more cars go on to Cherry Point Road? 70 won't be shut down there, but farther back, it's going to be... 70 won't be shut down there, but farther back, it's going to be shut down. So what are you going to do? If you live in New Bern, and you're going to, you're going to Havelock, and you come across the bridge, and you can get over to Cherry Point Road with no lights, no interruption, you're going to go all the way down on Cherry Point Road, and you're going to get on 70. So they nodded their head and said, "Yeah, this intersection's going to get even busier once we shut, start the shutdown, and people have to go on the access roads to get east." They're going to move whichever direction they can go to get there the easiest, and that's going to be Cherry Point Road. So not only is it a very, very busy intersection now, because Cherry Point Road terminates, you've got to do something. You can either continue down the access road, or you can try to get on to 70. So my recommendation is that we tell them, "Go ahead and close this intersection." And then, if that causes a lot of grief, we could then, if all it does is moves the cars to the next intersection, we haven't really accomplished much, maybe a less dangerous one. Not maybe, it is. It's less dangerous, because it's a traditional cross. So they would like, they would like us to do at least that, to at least close this one, and then see what happens. See if it causes more congestion, and if it does, then we can close the next one also, and make people do the U-turns. So I guess my recommendation to you, unless somebody has another comment disagrees, that we would go ahead and do that, and give them a resolution saying that we want that intersection closed for vehicles traveling east.
I think my point was, Denny, I'm not against what you're trying to say, but if you're going to take and turn them right, and going to go up there, and then make them turn again, if there's that much traffic, yeah. It says, if there's that much traffic, is it going to be an adequate turn lane for them all to get off on, you know?
They modify the turn lane.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's phase two of this. They can do, what they would do is, they modify that turn lane, and then put the bulb out on the other side.
Should be three lanes.
Turn across and get in it, and then be able to make a...
But if I understood them correctly, that would be out of the traditional funds, not the safety funds.
Safety funds can address cutting off, basically, anything coming through the middle of it.
And since it's less, I think he said, less than $100,000 to do that, that would be out of the safety fund, and they can do that. If we said, "Hey, let's do the whole, let's do all four pieces, two bubbles, and close two intersections," that would have to go and be out of the whatever budget, the traditional budget, the general budget.
Well, it ain't that much different, and when it got to hit the hill, you come out, you can't go to your left, you go to the right, then come out in a bubble, then go back east. So the same thing, so there's a safer spot there.
Well, they said, "When you do the U-turn, you're looking back, and you're only looking at the cars coming. Here, you're looking at them both directions."
As long as you got, when you turn, when you make a left turn and go down, as long as enough room to proceed on, not come, they're going to highway. There could probably be a problem, because people pulling it from other people.
Well, it's also going to be, let's, number one, I would say, let's do the quickest, easiest, see if it'll work fix, which is close that one.
Right.
Close the other one second. The other thing with the bubble, it might be the ideal solution, but, you know, when is that going to happen? Nine months from now?
Yeah.
I'd rather go and do a fix now.
The bubble's not going to happen quickly.
Right.
And even if we said, "Do the bubble, we want the whole thing," they said, "That's not going to be a quick fix at all." They can do this relatively quickly, the one intersection. And again, that's, that was their, you know, they kind of said, "Well, whatever you want to do." I said, "Well, I'm not the traffic expert." But they, they kind of walked through it and said, "Hey, our recommendation would be, go ahead and close this one, and then see where the, if you need to come back to us and say, you know, in 90 days after we do it, and say, 'We want the bubbles,' then they'll put that on the list to do."
That's what I'm by, Old Cherry Point Highway, you're talking about, coming out, right?
I'm sorry?
By Old Cherry Point Highway, coming out, go to east, that's what you're talking about?
Right.
Yeah. That one needed to be changed.
George.
Mr. Chairman. Denny, I'm sort of confused here. I can go along with the program, but if they've got such an issue with accidents, aren't we still now causing the accidents if you're going to allow a left-hand turn off of 70 onto that road? If you're going to do it, why are you going to allow any turns? Because if you're having accidents coming across, going east, you're getting hit on the left-hand side. If you've got them coming from New Bern, making a left-hand turn, all you've got to do now is cause the accidents on the right-hand side of the vehicle. I mean, I don't under...
If I understood you correctly, that there are, there were almost no, I don't remember seeing any accidents where someone coming from New Bern went on to the left. Accidents are all either people crossing all the way across. There are some people that were on, what's this business? Is that on this side, Jack?
That's the...
No, no, over here.
That's right countertops and a granite.
Yeah, the granite place. So if somebody's at the granite place, and they want to go on to Cherry Point Road, they're crossing two lanes of traffic. They wouldn't be able to do that anymore. This would prevent that. And there were about six bad accidents that started on this side, that started on this side of the road, crossing over. There were a whole bunch of accidents coming, the bulk of them, the big, by far the bulk of them, were people trying to get on to Highway 70 going east. Either getting T-boned from an eastbound car, or getting hit from, I'm sorry, T-boned from a westbound car, or getting hit from an eastbound car. Because they have to, they have to navigate two high-speed vehicles coming from both directions. They've got to navigate both of those, either to cross or to go to the east. So I didn't bring it with me. If you want to see it, I'll show it to you, but it's...
I see it. I just think we're causing another problem. I'm like, I'll vote for it to go with it, but I just think we're going to have the same problem now, making the left-hand turn to go on, because you're still crossing one lane, because you've got to stop there in the middle. You've got plenty of room to stop, because I use it every day when I'm up there, because that's all I use is the service road, coming out of that area. So if you're going to make the left-hand turn to go on to it, you've still got the eastbound or the westbound traffic, any, you know, you still can't judge it. You're still starting to zero to go across on a 70 mile.
I agree. But I will tell you that at Garner Road, there've been almost no accidents since they did that, and you can still make your left-hand turn there. But your only look, you're facing the cars that are coming at you, and you can judge better whether you can make that turn.
Can I make a suggestion? Why don't we take time one day and look at ourselves?
Why don't we, my suggestion to you was, if you guys are okay with the resolution, just put it on the next agenda. We'll send you the safety data with your next agenda, so you can review it or look at it.
We don't have to make a decision today.
Yeah.
But I wanted to put it out there and tell you that my belief is that we should go ahead and close this one. And if you want to see the data, I have it. And again, I didn't bring it with me. I thought, I didn't, I just forgot.
I've seen it before, so I know what you're talking about. It is bad.
Yeah, and I've got a friend who lives down there, so I do it frequently. It's, they're all dangerous, because you're going from a speed limit of 70 miles an hour. But it's easier to judge 70 miles an hour going in one direction than 70 miles an hour going in two directions. And I don't, you know, I'm concerned about, we've got 60 cars an hour making U-turns. That may be unintended consequences, which may get worse. But I think we ought to, I think we ought to try it. I mean, these are not tenders, these are, these are major accidents.
They also said, "If we try it, and it really turns out to be a problem, we can undo it." I don't know why we would, but we could.
I guess a no-brainer.
See, another thing about it too, when you come from the west and make a left turn on Old Cherry Point Highway, and people coming out Cherry Point Highway going easy, you can't see because they're blocking. One car blocking the other car. You can't see, and that's, I'm going, I'm going with you.
I think that's a big part of the problem, is the fact that you're looking, you're facing almost east.
Right.
And you've got to look back to the west.
You can look back, it's hard.
I don't know about you, but my head doesn't turn real good going that far back. So that's part of the problem that they acknowledge. It's such an unusual intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think you do have a problem here. There's no two ways about it. I think a temporary solution now would help. But I think we've got to get together with the Transportation Department. We, because in District 1 and District 2, we've got a real problem that we had a public hearing on, that they still haven't done anything with.
Tom, are you talking about the circle?
I'm talking about Nelson's.
I brought that up.
I mean, that has been going on for five years now. I got two calls last week from a woman, and then a man. One had their son hit that area, almost got killed. He was able to swerve the road. And then another person called me, it was a young girl who had the same problem, and fortunately, she didn't get hurt either. But that is, I mean, we've had five fatalities up there. One was a wife and, mother and two children. And I think we've got to get together with the Transportation Department, decide what the heck is going on here. They have proved this whole thing, they know what they're going to do, put a roundabout in there. I agree, you've got a real problem down there, and it should be, there should be a temporary fix in the meantime.
Yeah. Tom, I brought that up.
Yeah. No, I know, I know you...
I brought it up last week when I was with them. I said, "You know, what about the circle in the western?" They said, "Well, the engineering," they started, you know, "The engineering had to be done," and they said, "It's progressing." That was their words.
Well, actually, they, from what we understand, they had the whole thing formulated from what the safety fellow's name.
Haywood.
Haywood. It was all, all in the works, what was holding it up was the money.
Right. So you've got two problems. One is, the project you're referring to has a much higher price tag than the project. So because it's under $100,000...
I understand that, Joe.
It's handled locally versus...
But then there's also a time element.
They also said engineering. I don't know what that means, but they said the engineering takes time when they're going to do a big project like that.
This work here, if it's like Garner Road, can be done in about eight hours.
Well, no, I agree. That should be taken care of, the temporary part.
Okay.
I just, I just don't want Nelson Road to be put off, off and off.
Understand.
Well, DOT does not have the money to cut the grass between the MAP Act and the loss of gas tax revenues.
Well, that's what we're being told. I don't know how much...
The other thing, though, is, if you're working with DOT and you want them to do something, if you put a little money in the pot, they get a lot more interested. But, but I think, I agree, we need to get together with them, and 70 sort of, 70 to 42 has been all-consuming. I think we need to bring it back on the radar. But I don't need to see the safety data on this project right here to vote on it. I'll vote on Mr. Booker's recommendation right now. And if it doesn't work, then we take it out. But I don't think we need to wait for another fatality. So if y'all want to wait, that's fine, but if you want a motion, I'm happy to make one.
Give me a second.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second to request DOT to cut off this intersection here.
Yes, sir. Pass the resolution, yeah.
All right. Is any further discussion on the motion? Here and now, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Sure.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman. So I have Mr. Grady here. Would you like to go ahead, since we have, still have about 45 minutes, where it'd be the Commissioner, would you like to go ahead and talk about the vacancy with Commissioner 3 and the process for what we'd use?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Grady, if you would.
Yes.
So we're going to be handing out to you a draft memorandum. I'll give it just a second for you to actually get your copy.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just going to briefly go over the memo with you, and then I want to also cover the general statute that is attached. So this memo is from the chairman, the chair, vice chair, myself, along with the county attorney, have been working to understand this process and put something in motion. Obviously, as we go further, you'll note, there are some timelines that are established by general statutes. Basically, the memo states, "Due to the untimely death of Commissioner Johnny Sampson, vacancy now exists in Commissioner District 3." General Statute 158-27 dictates the process for how such a vacancy may be filled. I've attached the text for your review. So if you turn over to the second page I gave you, it's General Statute 158-27. A and B talk about how the vacancy occurs. C is where the meat of it is, for what you're looking at, whenever you need to fill this vacancy, and I'll just read that to you. Item C, "To be eligible for appointment to fill a vacancy, a person must be a member of the same political party as the member being replaced, if that member was elected as a nominee of a political party. And two, be a resident of the same district as the member being replaced." Of course, it also says that the Board of County Commissioners is the group that makes the appointment after consultation with the county executive party of the appropriate political party for filling the vacancy. Okay, if we'll go back to our Part 1. "To ensure that the process meets the standards set forth in General Statute 153A-27, the following process is proposed. One, send correspondence on November 17, 2020, to the chairman of the Craven County Democratic Party, indicating the board's desire to receive its official counsel in writing no later than November 30, 2020. This counsel should include the name of the individual recommended to fill the vacancy." Dan, do you have a copy of that?
Uh-huh.
This copy of the letter will be for reference for your files. Item two, each county commissioner, each Craven County Commissioner shall have the opportunity to provide any name for consideration to fill the vacancy, which should be received no later than November 30, 2020, to the Craven County Attorney, Clerk, and Manager. On December 1, 2020, the Craven County Clerk to the Board will provide a roster to the Craven County Board of Commissioners consisting of all names which have been submitted that meet the standards set forth under General Statute 153A-27. Craven County Clerk will schedule a 20-minute interview with each candidate on the roster to take place just prior to the County Commissioner's regular meeting on December 7, 2020. Interviews will be 30-minute time blocks consisting of a 20-minute interview, and then a period of 10 minutes for the sitting board to have discussion after each candidate has been interviewed. Once the interviews are completed, the Craven County Board of Commissioners will schedule an official vote on the vacancy replacement at the December 14, 2020 County Commissioner Work Session. If further discussion is needed prior to the December 14, 2020 County Commissioner Meeting, the Board reserves the opportunity to schedule a special-called meeting on Thursday, December 10, 2020. In the instance, you shall need more time to confer. With all this said, the goal would be to have this person seated at the first January meeting on January the 4th. And that would be within the 60-day time limit that the general statute sets, or the amount of time that can transpire during a vacancy. Give you one day.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Any other questions? Jack?
Yes, sir.
If further discussions is needed, who can, who can request further discussions? What if the community, the Democratic Party, or others concern, has concerns or issues that they want to bring forward to the Board? Is that something that's...
Well, in looking at that, the process sets itself up that there is a public comment period on December the 7th at your Commissioner meeting that would allow for the public to make comments, prior to you making the decision.
And I would say, Mr. Chairman, I think the thought process with that is, that will be after the interviews.
Right.
So, you know, any interested individuals, it's all going to be done in public session, has to be by law. And so whether it's the Democratic Party, or any resident citizen of that community, if they're here during that timeframe, and they hear the comments being made, I mean, they definitely have the opportunity to address the Board. Out of respect for individuals, you know, I mean, we definitely don't call names, but... Out of respect for individuals, you know, I mean, we definitely don't call names, but.
I, I think we're covering all the bases that we have to cover.
I think you give an ample opportunity. So what we're looking for today is if the Board agrees with this process outlined in the memorandum from the chairman, we will kick off, um, item one tomorrow, which would then set up the date between November 17 and November 30 of collecting of names. So the next action after that would be to send you the roster of names submitted on December 1st.
Hey, do I have a motion?
Come on.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
Okay, we'll get it going. Ari, did you want to add anything? I'm, I'm sorry I didn't call on you.
I, I think you, uh, covered it. I will add that the 60-day time horizon in the statute, there is no ability to extend it. So if we do not act within the 60 days, it actually kicks the decision over to the Court of Superior Court. So we do have a very hard deadline. If, for whatever reason, we need to call special meetings, let's keep that in our hip, hip pocket in December, but, uh, we've, uh, you know, the statute says this is when you've got to act by, so it's a tight timeline, but it's required.
So with that in mind, that's why we went ahead and pre-planned the December 10th date. We hope you'll review your calendars and make sure you keep that open. We don't have a time of day, it could be morning and afternoon, we're indifferent to that. You also, um, to Mr. Ari's point, one thing, just thinking down the line, you still have the 21st as an option for a special meeting, if you need it. But I think once you get past the 21st, there's so many days that are holidays, with New Year's and Christmas, you're really gonna, you really need to have it wrapped up by the 14th, no later than the 21st.
Can I make, December 10th, that's on, on our schedule day? What day is that on?
December 10th is a Thursday, and we picked that because it would be the notice period from the 7th, it'd be the earliest you could have a meeting.
And what time?
We don't have a time, I, I would reserve that time until you meet on the 7th and determine. I mean, just say 8:30 if you want, I don't, I don't have a preference, whatever time the Board can be here.
Well, I wish that had been discussed with the people beforehand, cause my.
What people?
Commissioners. Are you available on the 10th?
I mean, we just, okay.
But.
Well, is there anybody that can't meet on the 10th?
The 10th, the 10th is just in case.
The 10th is in case, you need it, you may not need it.
Right.
You can meet on the 11th.
I, but is there anybody that can't meet on the 10th if we?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we could.
How about the 11th?
11th, that's all.
We just have to have the 48-hour notice for a special meeting.
11th is great.
Okay.
Flexibility is there.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, if we need it, we'll have Friday, December 11th. How about 8:30 a.m.?
No.
How about 1:30 p.m.?
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, 1:30 is good.
Okay.
What time did you say?
1:30 on the 11th, if needed.
1:30.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, at this point, that's all for the manager report. When we get to the convention center, we're gonna do a quick tour of the facility, and then we'll come and have a ribbon cutting and have some speakers from the folks that worked on it, so.
Okay, um, next is Commissioner's comments. I'll start with, uh, where should I start, Nan?
I'm sorry?
Listen, Theron.
Well, give me four.
I go.
What happened? You call my name?
I, I called your name, but I mean, if you don't.
Oh, I hear, I hear, no comments.
Yes, Danny.
Uh, just a couple of comments regarding Commissioner Sampson. Commissioner Jones and I attended the funeral on Friday and appreciated, uh, County manager's comments and the sheriffs. They were well-made and, um, represented all of us, I believe, as well as, uh, Friday night, Thursday night, if I have my dates right, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Mark spoke at the, uh, private ceremony, and Commissioner McCabe, I'm sorry, I don't want to leave you out. Uh, they all spoke on Thursday night. I only spent two years with Mr. Sampson here as a commissioner, so I, I really don't have a, a long time of, uh, a lot, lot of experience with him, but made a couple of trips with him, and, and, um, all the positive things that were said about him at the funeral, I could, I could go on and on and on. But my recollection of Commissioner Sampson was, was not here, but as a alderman. Uh, I spent four years as a City of New Bern alderman, and almost, I would say, at least half or more of the alderman meetings, Commissioner Sampson was in the audience. He was really, and he rarely spoke, but he was there paying attention to what was going on in his city. And, um, if he spoke, it was to individuals afterward or privately. And I just remember him from then, he was a commissioner, of course, I knew that, but he was a citizen who was involved. Uh, I can't think, well, there were a couple others, but probably more than any other City of New Bern resident, he attended those meetings. And so that was my, my main recollection of him was him showing up many, many nights and, um, and, and staying tuned in to what's going on in the city of New Bern. So, um, I, I'm gonna miss him like all of you are.
Commissioner Ile, E.T.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo what Commissioner Booker said. I was not able to attend the services from Commissioner Sampson due to COVID precautions, but I worked with Mr. Johnny and Ms. Ethel for almost a decade, consider them friends, but their reputation in the community was well-earned, they are honored, and I will miss him, and they are big shoes to be filled. So I appreciate, uh, the community's support, and I will keep Ms. Ethel and the family in my prayers. So, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Liner.
Sir, thank you. There's not much to add for Mr. Johnny. Mr. Johnny was a, brought people together. Mr. Johnny wasn't one to divide an organization, he tried to bring everybody together to work on the same page, and his concern for his community is, is above approach. I mean, that, that's the only thing he had, was for his community and the underdog, as everybody has been saying before, so. Like I've, like I've told him, and we've had many discussions, one-on-one and everything else, that, uh, he was greatly respected by me, and I think everybody that got to work with him and know him. Other than that, uh, we're getting into the time of the seasons, that we've, a lot going on and a lot happening. All I ask is everybody to be safe and watch out for one another, that's all, sir.
Okay, Commissioner McCabe.
No, I, I have no comment, Mr.
I have no comment.
Mr. Chairman, yes, two things. First, definitely, uh, I think Commissioner Liner, what he just said, and that's what I had in my mind to say about, um, Commissioner Sampson, he was not a divider, uh, he was a uniter. And, um, he, uh, very few times that we didn't come in contact with each other, he didn't ask about my family. Always had concern for other people. And, um, there's definitely a void left on this Board of Commissioners, and, uh, he will definitely be missed, and, um, our prayers are with Ms. Sampson and, and the family. Also, Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to say, um, you brought up about Nelson Road and, um, the concern we got there. Uh, Jack, I was wondering if it would be appropriate, um, if the Board would agree to it, that we would also send the Department of Transportation, um, a letter from this Board of Commissioners, if, if this Board would agree? Just finding out what, even though it's been told verbally, but let's see if we can get it in writing, to see what the status of, um, that project is, and to let them know of our desire for it to be completed as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. You know, I.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just, I've already had my comments, but just to piggyback on what Commissioner Jones just said, um, in July of 2019, we notified the, the Department of Transportation that there was a speed limit on a road that was, we felt excessive. We felt that that, that road, when that speed limit was established, that road was pretty rural, now there are a lot of homes on that road, and we wanted that speed limit lowered from 45 to 35. That was our request. Jack, how many times did we have to follow up on that?
Um, I probably lost count, sir, but probably more than 10.
Uh, last month, we finally got a response. So, uh, you know, I guess, and I'm not throwing stones at the DOT, I don't know what goes on there, I don't know how busy they are, but they, uh, they came back, um, with the, with the, uh, response for the wrong road. And then we had to go back to them again and say, no, 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 we weren't talking about that road, we're talking about this road. It was all clearly in writing, so I don't know how that happened. But they finally agreed to lower it from 45 to 40, after a year and a half. I guess my point is that, I don't know if they're understaffed or what's going on, but uh, we need to, we need to keep them, um, reminded, it may not be the right choice of words, we keep, we need to keep reminding them of those projects that we're concerned about.
And a lesson in geography.
Mr. Chairman, I would also, maybe, um, I know COVID has changed a lot of things, but, um, we have in years past, I don't know, we've done it since the two of you've been on this Board, but we used to meet with DOT, a DOT board member and the district engineer every year. And, um, it, it might be a good idea if we could arrange something with you, um, come first of, uh, 2021.
Actually, we, we were meeting, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Jack, weren't we meeting once, once a quarter at the Board, uh, up in Raleigh?
Yeah, I mean, with different, different groups you were.
Different groups.
Highway 70, Highway 17, had special.
Yeah, we had a special relationship where I would go to their meetings, uh, which, which did help because we were able to, in a smaller group.
Right.
Let them know what we felt. But you're right, Commissioner.
But maybe, uh, if the Board would agree to it, maybe, Jack, we could go ahead and start looking at, uh, January, February, of trying to set up a date with their calendars to, and just come and address, cause there are, I know, we've all got a list, and maybe kind of get a feel of, like Commissioner, uh, Mitchell said, what is their financial status, you know? I mean, get a better understanding, maybe, maybe they can share.
It might, their unknowns may have cleared up, yeah, nine months into COVID, so I think that'd be a really good idea, Mr. Vice.
Commissioner Jones, I was, if you're, if the Board's okay on your suggestion, maybe have, um, General Overhold and Pressing come at the work session in January, I mean, our, our workday meeting, second meeting in January, does that sound acceptable to the Board?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, in attending the services Thursday night for, uh, Commissioner Sampson, I think two things stood out in my mind about him. One, that he was a perfect gentleman. Not only was he a perfect gentleman, but he had an awful lot of compassion for all kinds of people, all, and his biggest goal, I think, was for people be able to make a better life for himself, for themselves in Craven County. I'm gonna miss him. As I mentioned at the thing, I used to ask Johnny all the time, how do you feel today, Johnny? Johnny would say, if I was any better, I don't know what I would do. And, uh, I think that, there's a lot about the man. I guess we can go into motion for recess?
Yeah, recess and reconvene at 10 a.m. at the Convention Center.
Will we be coming back here, or take everything with us and we're going?
We don't have.
Back up down there.
You have no other reason to come back here unless you just want to.
Okay.
Motion to recess at the Convention Center and, and reconvene at 10 o'clock.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.